We raise your gratations and life-saving Lord for this opportunity to participate in this gathering of the Westmoreland County Commissioners. We ask that you bless their work as they continue to work for the stewardship of this county. And we ask you in a very special way also to bless our Honesty Kevin Misick. Lord, look with favor on all of those who desire to do your will in church and in the assistance of your holy name, Jesus Christ, our Lord and our Savior.
Amen.
To the Father, and the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to make a motion to go out of order if we could do the proclamations first, please.
Is there a second?
There's a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Today, we're here to give a proclamation to Kevin Misick, who is the owner of Appell's, a five-man's boutique here. Always wanted to get back to the community where he grew up, remembering what it was like years ago when the city of Greensburg was a major shopping destination, with stores like Troutman's Department Stores and the Warriors Building, both on Main Street in the city's historical district. Misick grew up in Crabtree and graduated from Greensburg Salem High School. He always wanted to have aspirations of opening his own store. He worked in corporate retail for seventeen years. Greensburg didn't have a men's specialty shop anymore. Misick decided to take the leap and opens a men's store, knowing the risk. Misick decided to open the doors in January of 2003, where he reevaluates inventory for a specialty food service shop, where politicians, journalists, attorneys, and shoppers with various backgrounds and trades have shopped there, some from Italy, New York City, and Pittsburgh. When COVID hit, the business was abruptly closed from March eighteenth through the sixteenth in 2020. It hit both businesses hard. Many never reopened, but Kevin Misick's did. He reevaluated the store's inventory to carry different items with success. His customers stood by him and became like a family. It lasts for twenty more years. Therefore, the Commissioners of Westmoreland County, myself, Sean Curtis, Dr. T. Chu, and Gina Sorely-Thorashia, do hereby proclaim February sixteenth as Appell's Day in Westmoreland County and recognize proprietor Kevin Misick for giving back to the community for the last twenty years.
And we're going to get a photo of Kevin first, but everyone that's here with him, please come up, while they're coming up for a photo, everybody.
Moving on to the Westmoreland County Industrial Development Corporation. May please have approval of the minutes held in the January twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-three meeting that is presented. Is there a motion?
Some move?
Is there a second?
Second? I mean, some move?
Commissioner Chu, second, and all in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Mr. Wagoni.
Good morning. I have five items for your consideration. Number one, consider approval of change order number one with a Liberone for an increase listed on the agenda. This is for an increase in the original contract specifically for an allowable desert price adjustment. Completion date of March twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three remains in place. Item number two, consider approval of a resolution authorizing the execution of an option agreement with Chelsea Holding Company for lot five, containing approximately twenty-nine acres at the Commerce Crossing at Westmoreland Site located in Swinton Township. Chelsea Holding Company represents Aluclass Group in the USA, which develops manufacturers and distributes various exterior building products. At Commerce Crossing at Westmoreland Location, the company plans to build one hundred and seventy thousand square foot manufacturing, mixing and warehouse facility, and gradually expand to approximately one hundred, three hundred thousand square feet. The project will employ around a hundred employees within the first five years. Item number three, consider approval of a resolution authorizing the execution of a second addendum to a lease agreement with Francine Hinkle for space in the Green Ford's Building Complex. Total lease payments to be received for the one-year term are shown on the agenda. Item number four, consider approval to accept the proposal from Horner-Wilde-Tarek P.C. to designate Horner-Wilde-Tarek as the IDC Certified Public Accountant Firm and enter into an agreement to audit its financial statements for the fiscal years two thousand and twenty-three, twenty-two through two thousand and twenty-four. Other proposals received are listed on the agenda. And finally, item number five, consider approval of a resolution committing and authorizing the transfer of four million dollars to Westmoreland County for the two thousand and twenty-three adopted county budget.
Is there a motion for all five items for approval?
Some move?
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Some move?
I'll second.
Second.
All right. You're adjourned. Thank you, Mr. Wagoni.
Thank you.
Moving over to our general agenda. May please have approval of the minutes held in the January twenty-sixth meeting.
Some move?
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Notice of executive sessions listed from February first and February ninth. One was for personal matters, second was for legal matters. Madam Solicitor, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner. At this time, we do have the opportunity for a public comment. If there's anyone who would like to address the Commissioners, you may do so at this time. We would just ask that you keep your comments to three minutes and that you state your name and your residence for the record. I would note that prior to today's meeting, the county's chief clerk has received some public comment via email. If anyone would like those public comments, they are available in the back of the room, and they will be made part of the official minutes of this meeting.
I'm not sure the mic is on, is it? How's that? Better? I'll use my teacher voice. Hi. First of all, best wishes on the occasion of Westmoreland County's two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary. Can you to the back here? Am I good? All right. Some of the others in our group, we may need to get this turned on. My name is Barbara McMillan, and my husband and I are privileged to live in a reconstructed log home in Donnawol Township that dates back to the seventeen-eighties. So we share your commitment to the historical roots of our county and a hope for its future. We are heavily invested in this project. We are four H leaders in Westmoreland County. I actually was in charge of the Westmoreland County Courthouse Gardens for seventeen years, hopefully soon to return when the renovation of the barrage and the plaza are done. And I'm an associate director for the Westmoreland Conservation District, so we are in this for the long haul. However, as elected government officials, you Commissioners need to know about a serious threat to the future of Westmoreland County in the form of LCT's Rustic Ridge Metalurgic Coal Mine in Donnawol Township. This mine encompasses two thousand eight hundred underground acres and operates behind our ninety-five acre organic farm. Residents within the thick of the current mine have experienced home subsidence serious enough for buyouts of several homes by the company and monitoring of several others, as well as water loss and contamination, heavy truck traffic with two serious accidents within the past eight weeks now, safety violations, constant noise, coal dust on the roads, and on and on. The coal mining company has been in the permanent renewal process with DEP for more than a year due to multiple deficiencies in their renewal application, as noted in writing by DEP. I am particularly concerned about the proposed expansion of mining operations under the Pennsylvania Turnpike and further northward into Westmoreland County. For more than six years, local residents have repeatedly provided public testimony about these issues to DEP and to representatives of the coal mining company. Finally, most of us are fed up, and we are saying enough is enough. And there will be a few others speaking about their personal areas of knowledge or experience with this. The Commissioners have given in advance a four-page packet that kind of looks like this, through your aids, actually. We've mapped some specific information on the current and proposed mining activity of more than nine thousand acres in the Laurel Highlands. As your constituents, we need you, Commissioners, to take a clear stand to stop this proposed expansion of the coal mine further into the county. And in fact, uphold your constitutional duty to protect our rights as Pennsylvania citizens to, I quote, "clean air, pure water, and to the preservation of the natural, scenic, historic, and aesthetic values of the environment." Pennsylvania's public natural resources are the common property of all the people, including generations yet to come. Let this be true for the next two hundred and fifty years of Westmoreland County. Thanks.
Thank you.
My name is Elizabeth Weaver, and I live in Hemphill Township. I spent the last week in Virginia and by chance reviewed Richmond's plans for their ARPA funds. They got one hundred and fifty-five million dollars, and they have a population of about two hundred and twenty-five million versus Westmoreland's population of three hundred and fifty million dollars. However, they had their plan fully developed in June, July of two thousand and twenty-one. Their funds include eighty-one million dollars, or fifty-two percent of their funds, for childcare, family crisis funding, community careers center funding, park development, unification of the city plus renovations and/or expansions of sports building. Twenty-one percent of their funds, or thirty-two million, is going directly to affordable and healthy housing and housing redevelopment. Eighty-point-nine million, or five-point-seven percent of their funds are for small business development, workforce development, COVID administration. Nineteen-point-two million for climate risk assessment, lead line replacement, stormwater issues, helping home weatherization and rehab development, and workforce development and COVID administration. Eight-point-five million for safety issues, five million for behavioral and mental health, substance abuse, access to healthcare education, food access, vaccine incentives for children and COVID outreach. This plan utilizes a hundred percent of their fund allocation. To date, Westmoreland funds have been used for seven million for the courthouse parking and rising as its open moment's funds, four-point-five million for Westmoreland County Food Bank, ten-point-four million for agreements with redevelopment authority of Westmoreland County for final approval, and I believe that's for housing development. That's nine-point-nine percent of the budget. Eight-point-six percent are nine million for the municipal authority of Westmoreland County Fund to upgrade the water system. A hundred thousand dollars for recovering chairs in the courthouse. The Commissioners recently approved three-point-six million, which is about three-point-four percent of the plan for construction of a new haven shelter to add twelve beds to the six-point, sixty-seven beds that we already have. We are in serious need of more beds, but this is three hundred thousand dollars per bed, which seems to be an outrageous amount. And one has to wonder if the contracts that are being bid out are direct capable contractors or if they're being bid to insiders and cronies of the Commissioners, and what sums are being increased for these lucrative projects. Approximately eight million dollars of these funds are also appropriated for increases in salaries for the Commissioners and other county courthouse representatives.
You're out. Three minutes left.
What?
Thank you.
This is the plan.
Okay.
For, so to give you some ideas so you can do your jobs.
Thank you so much for coming today. It's great to see you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Dave McCullen from Donnawol Township. You may, you just heard my wife speak about how we live in a log home we built close to the coal mine. I am a professional engineer that has been working in industrial safety for a number of years, retired now. And I have comments about LCT Rustic Bridge, number one coal mine, that are related to my experience. Specifically, I'm concerned about the number of safety violations noted by the Bureau of Mine Safety in every one of their on-site inspections since the opening of the mine. That is, last year, there were ten inspections. Most of six of those were safety inspections. They all failed, and that goes back every year since the mine opened. Likewise, with electrical inspections. These violations were all related to electrical safety and mine safety, including safety issues such as roof bowling and support, buildup of coal dust, health and safety violations regarding rescue and recovery in the mine, concerns about the guards of belt chains and repair pits, and much more. In fact, from January, last month, January ninth, a miner working in a mile underground at the mine got his arm caught in a mining machine and had to be lifefighted to a hospital. Maybe it was due to a protective guard on the chain, I don't know. In my opinion, as a professional engineer, such a pattern of safety violations over many years is unacceptable. And Commissioners, I ask you, why would any employer in Westmoreland County be allowed to continue to put the safety of its workers and the local residents at risk? And why should a company be permitted to expand its operation even further in the county? Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I'm very nervous, so just bear with me. This is my first time speaking.
You're good. I don't know if you can just see your name in your hat.
My name is Collette Corber. I live at one sixty-five Yukon Avenue in Yukon, south end of Township. I was born and raised in Yukon, living outside of town for only about five years of my forty-nine years. Max Environmental, formerly No Service, has grown there as well for all these years. They've been polluting the town and causing numerous health problems to a lot of the residents. When I was a teenager, my parents and other community members formed pride concerning residents of the off to fight No Service. They wanted to stop them from dumping toxic waste in our town. They warned us to grow up healthy, no more rashes, brain problems, cancer, thyroid problems, to name a few. No Service was able to run them out of money and resources. They could pay their lawyers, pay their fines, and continue with business as usual. Now, No Service has become Max Environmental, and I have become a parent of twins that are now eight. Max wants to expand, make a new lagoon where they were dumped untreated hazardous waste next to a creek on top of abandoned mines and poisoned us even more. They have spent years getting away with paying off hundreds of violations, and continue to grow in spite of the fines. For all the offenses they were caught doing, I can imagine the things that they have gotten away with, not caring how it has affected us. My dad has had a kidney removed last year due to cancer and has heart problems for years. My uncle died of pancreatic cancer. My mother has spent most of the last two years in bed due to my senior travis and a slew of other health problems. I have partially noticed thyroiditis, and my right thyroid was taken out in two thousand and fourteen. On March thirty-first, I'm having the left thyroid taken out due to a mass that has grown up the entire side. I was diagnosed with heart problems. My eight-year-olds have one lerna brand, one is autistic, the other was born with a lesion on her brain. She has asthma and has gone into respiratory distress a few times. She also has severe learning disabilities, and this is just my family. A number of people have cancer or have lost loved ones to cancer in this small town. Although Max Environmental is aware of this and has been for many years, they just do not care. They want to expand and make this worse. Untreated hazardous materials in my town affects the whole county and probably beyond. Please help us to say no to Max Environmental's expansion to lagoon number seven. Help us do what a generation before could not stop. Show us that the people count more than money. Thank you.
Thank you. I did all of that.
Okay. My name is Kevin Hassley. I'm a resident of Actley, PA. My property straddles both Donnawol and my pleasant townships, all in Westmoreland County. I'm a mechanical engineer by trade, working in the nuclear field, designing the fire planes for the U.S. Navy aircraft carriers and submarines, major combatant ships. It's very challenging work that demands utmost integrity from me every single day when I go to work. LCT number one coal mine expansion is planned to run straight through my dream property, which I purchased in Actley about three years ago, off of Route thirty-one. I'm a conservative by nature and generally do support coal mining and fossil fuels, but only if it can be done responsibly and without injury to others. There are ways that coal mining can be done to minimize potential of subsidence and impact of groundwater. I'm here to tell you that LCT is not doing this, mostly because it will result in greater costs, hence less profit for them. Now, I absolutely hate asking people for help in terms of, I'm a very independent person by nature. I came here today asking you to step up and bring this to the attention of our various local leaders in Donnawol and Mount Pleasant Townships who can help put an end to the expansion, bring it to the attention of DEP in Harrisburg and all Westmoreland County residents who will be impacted by it. Want to be clear, we do not want the expansion to take place. What can you do? You can help to influence changes in the Drought County and Pennsylvania mining regulations to ensure property owners are informed when the money is occurring below their houses and water wells and give them the option to refuse the money in these specific areas directly below them. This is something you can do. You can help stop the expansion of LCT number one mine by studying problems with safety, traffic problems, noise, impacts on tourism. You guys could do this. Now, I work at mine as, similar to other areas, other things with the mining territory like computers, phones, automobiles, things tend to get better over time because why? Because better technology, people thinking smarter, using their brains more. Sometimes it costs a little more, but that's usually acceptable for the improvements. Unfortunately, with Pennsylvania mining regulations, it doesn't take place because the regulations allow, methods were used a hundred years ago to be used today. Today, this technology, they don't have to mine directly into these houses. They can go around and same thing for water wells. It's just crazy that in two thousand and twenty-three, we're still doing this.
Sir, you're three minutes left. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. Good morning. Good morning, everybody. Public speaking. My name is Sharon Enfield. I live at two thirty-four Underwood Avenue, Great St. Louis, Pennsylvania. I'm a transplant from Baltimore, Maryland, forty-seven years ago, so I'm a great Greensburg. I'm here with no doubt of statistics, very few, but with my own personal concerns about how the funding that came down to us from the federal government, the AARP fund, is going to be used. I have about three concerns: the homeless, mental health issues, and the surroundings of our citizens in public housing. I understand, and I think it was mentioned before, that we have twelve additional beds for Westmoreland County at the expense of three hundred thousand dollars a minute. This is not going to do a lot to put our homeless people into a shelter, but it's a story, right? I have a concern about mental health. My own personal story, my daughter just came out of deep depression, and she's suffering with anxiety most of her life. Fortunately, she was able to get the help she needed through intense therapy and drugs, medications, which were changed very much because not everybody responds the right way to. I am happy to say that she is improved, she is working again, and this is because she's blessed in order to be able to afford these medications and this therapy. Not all of our citizens in Westmoreland County can do that, and do they have access to therapy that is there on a regular, consistent basis? I would hope that the Commissioners would consider the impact it has on individuals, family, children, when they are dispersed in these spots. My last comment would be about public housing. I've never been in one, but I've been told that some of the conditions are deplorable: bed bugs, roaches, maybe vermin. I don't know. Like I said, I've never been in one. I've heard some stories. But I would say that living in conditions like this would be physical and mental strain on anybody, that maybe this is reason for some of our mental problems. But can you imagine also being a child and living in a condition like this so that you have to get up in the morning and go to school? How your academics might suffer? And speaking of academics, I just came out of, we are coming out of a pandemic, and we all know, we've all heard, that children have been affected by this because disproportionately, many of them weren't able to have their lessons on internet because of not having broadband, not having access to internet. I would ask that, I think this is being looked into, that you would expand broadband services to every corner of our county. We are...
You're, man, you're three minutes left.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming.
Hello, my name is Judith Miller, and my husband and I are originally from Latre and have always loved the Laurel Highlands. Upon retirement, we built a dream home, which is located on Hullen Bridge Lake. Since that time, the miners come in, and it is now in the footprint of LCT's Rustic Bridge number one mine in Westmoreland County, approximately one thousand feet from the port. No, not long after we moved into the house, we were notified that the mine was coming to the area, an area where mining was rejected twice before. Rustic Bridge number one has approved, and our troubles began. I would discuss one of the, one of the troubles that were the greatest impact on me, and that subsides. LCT did not do their due diligence in regards LCT did not do their due diligence in regards to the application for the original permit. No core sampling homes were drilled near the area of subsidence on Hallett Bridge Lane. The change in the geology halted mining just 70 feet from our home. This change should have raised a red flag that this is an area of concern and should have been addressed originally. As commissioners, are you aware of the issues with which the citizens have to contend? Is information that the mines do not want to broadcast and homeowners are reluctant to discuss since they personally must deal with the mine for their compensation? The homeowners near me are mostly retired senior citizens. Their financial loss and mental anguish due to the subsidence damage has been devastating to them. Up to three homes within the current mining area have experienced subsidence significant enough to be purchased or entered into an agreement with LCT. We are aware of 10 total complaints that have been reported. These issues include cracking walls and shifting foundations. Four of the homes are right near me. Two property owners have settled with LCT and two are still in negotiation. As documented by the Recorder of Deeds, one of the houses was purchased for $600,000. These aren't small homes. The other ones are at the same price. Because these homes will have little or no resale value, the damage will eventually impact the property tax to the county. We also have future concerns. What happens to the homes that were purchased by LCT? Will they become abandoned, mine-created slums? Now, LCT is acting to extend Rustic Ridge Mine and expand the mining with new mines in our area. Their original application did not even address the subsidence issue. The Laurel Highlands has been victimized by the mines for many years. The area is now emerging with increased tourism and development. The issues from the mine, subsidence, lost contamination of water, truck traffic, et cetera, will stifle this emergence. Please support us in our effort to preserve the Laurel Highlands and designate this area as unsuitable for mining.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Not only the legs, but the eyes don't work very well. I'm Martha Heimbaugh, and I live in Darnable Township. My property is in the footprint of the Rustic Ridge One Deep Coal Mine. I have on my property a spring, a drilled well, a pretty good-sized pond that is spring-fed, and two small tributaries to Indian Creek. Got lots of concerns about this mining situation, but what I want to talk about today has to do with the potential damage to the existing wells and springs that provide the water to many, many property owners. As an example of the extension of this problem, if you take a look at all of the acreage that is involved in just the underground mining and the proposed underground mining of 7,000 acres, that is 11 square miles of underground mining. And in this, in this area, there are many private wells and springs that provide water to the people who live there. The number of existing private water supplies in the area is at least 153 springs and 373 wells. I say at least because we are not certain that the mine operator has identified all of the wells and springs in the property that is proposed, is under application for Rustic Ridge Two. Damage to existing wells and springs happens like this. When underground coal is removed, there is the shifting in the geologic strata above the coal, and this strata contains the aquifers that provide the water to the wells and springs. As this strata reacting to the removal of the coal gradually changes its position, it can affect the aquifers so that they no longer are providing water to certain wells and springs. This is a very serious situation. We already have 17 complaints of water issues in the currently operating mine, and considering how much is proposed to continue after this, we're going to have a lot of water damage. And public, a public water supply for this extensive rural area of 11 square miles is simply not economically feasible. So this circumstance contributes to the conclusion that this section of Westmoreland County should be identified as unsuitable for underground coal mining. The 2018 Westmoreland County Comprehensive Plan in Strategy 4.4, Improve and Sustain Water Resources, asks for this action, identify opportunities to maintain or improve quality and availability of the county's water resources. Our wells and springs are an essential part of the Westmoreland County's water resources. And therefore, I ask county commissioners, what opportunities can you provide to maintain the availability of water in our springs and wells?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Sorry, I didn't know they had a full time. Sorry, I didn't mean to have you put there.
Here's a copy of what I-
Thank you. Thank you so much. We have to get a light like that. That's a good idea. These are eight. Yeah.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for the time and opportunity to be here to speak today. My name is Mike Gordera. I'm a resident of the Laurel Highlands in Westmoreland County and a board member of the Mountain Watership Association. I'm here today to voice my concerns regarding the safety of the proposed Rustic Ridge Mine Expansion. My first concern is the increase in industrial truck traffic. As an avid cyclist, I have many friends that travel through the Laurel Highlands to escape the traffic and dangers of cycling in more populated areas. No amount of share-the-road signs can mitigate the dangers of increasing commercial truck traffic. In fact, a very good friend of mine was struck by a commercial truck several years ago while riding his bike in the Laurel Highlands. He was left on the side of the road, unconscious and bleeding. His bike broken, his bicycle broken into pieces. Luckily, he survived this accident. However, others are not so lucky. My previous neighbors, Lee and Diane Welker, were tragically struck and killed in their vehicle by a commercial truck in the Laurel Highlands just outside of Mount Pleasant. By increasing industrial truck traffic through mining operations, accidents like these will inevitably become more common. Unfortunately, current regulations allow these truck drivers to be compensated by the number of loads delivered, thus encouraging reckless driving, which has resulted in numerous fatalities. Another safety concern of mine is that of protecting our water. Many of our community members have well water in their homes. There has already been loss of water at several sites in the current mining footprint. What about the chemicals that are leaching into wells and aquifers and the heavy metals being discharged into our streams and water pits? Many of our municipal water supplies are downstream of the proposed expansion discharge site. Now, one might argue that these concerns are too indirectly related to this specific mine expansion. So I'd like to point out that LCT Energy has a history of violating mine safety and health administration regulations. Since 2015, LCT has had two fatalities at mines operating in Somerset County. Both instances resulted in noted safety violations. Just last month, a young man was lifeblooded in the Rustic Ridge Mine, once again resulting in a noted safety violation. According to the DEP Web Application E-Facts, safety violations have been identified at 61% of the Rustic Ridge Mine inspections. I'd like to note the only inspections that did not turn up a safety violation were subsidence inspections, which we hear there is subsidence happening. These violations, these safety violations range from miners not having the required certifications to issues with exhaust ventilation. Now, you may recall the 2010 Upper Big Branch Mine disaster, which resulted in the death of 29 coal miners. It was found that a faulty exhaust contributed to the explosion. 10 years later, Steve Earl wrote a song about that disaster, and I'd like to close with a quote from that song. "Don't try and tell me that you couldn't foresee what everybody reckoned was a matter of time." So I ask you, Commissioners, for the safety of our water, our community, and your constituents, please stand with us in opposition to this mine expansion.
Thank you.
Hello. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Kurt Munboth. I'm a resident of Ballarat, PA, in Westmoreland County. I'm a member, a board member of Mountain Watership, but also secretary of the Tubal Truck Club, which is a nonprofit focused on stream improvement, waters fishing in Westmoreland County. The proposed massive expansion of the Rustic Ridge Coal Mine is a huge threat to water resources of Westmoreland County and the Commonwealth. Westmoreland County's major economic drivers of recreation, tourism, and agriculture all depend on clean water resources, which will be negatively impacted by the proposed expansion. Westmoreland County's residents that live within the expanded proposed footprint will suffer diminished quality of life, property values from noise, dust, dirt, air pollution, subsidence at home, and loss and degradation of water supplies. The current operation of the Rustic Ridge Mine is no positive track record of protection for Westmoreland County citizens where Rustic Ridge has its operations. It has already caused loss of water and subsidence to many homes in the current footprint of the mine, as predicted by those who oppose the current mine, as well as fugitive dust and danger and headaches from major truck traffic associated with this deep mine. The track record of current mining operation is clearly a negative for the communities where it's operated. Every deep mine that eventually leads to mine acid discharges to waterways of the Commonwealth. The damage that occurs will be in geological perpetuity. Over one-third of Pennsylvania's water resources are permanently damaged from pollution to coal mining operations. We cannot, as a society, keep destroying the water supplies for current and future generations. By permitting this massive and environmentally damaging expansion of the Rustic Ridge Deep Mine Operation only benefits economically a very tiny subset of Westmoreland County citizens, but negative economic impacts far more for our citizens than economic and their quality of life. As the current operators demonstrated a terrible record of protecting the lives of citizens where it operates, any expenses or operations should absolutely not be permitted. We have a history in Pennsylvania of destroying our waterways with coal mine. It's time for this to stop. There's no reason for this mine to be suspended in the lifetime. Thank you very much for your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Julie Law, and I also live in the Laurel Highlands. I have been on the Mountain Watership where we're directors, president, for 10 years. I too want to comment on Rustic Ridge. I reviewed a section of your county comprehensive plan, which cites tourism and encourages people to visit our Laurel Highlands. We want visitors to feel safe, thus I want to address the truck traffic in this area, which has become exponential. I travel state Route 711 and 31 from Connelsville to Donigal several times a week for work, errands, and pleasure. This corridor is impacted by Three Stone Quores and the Rustic Ridge Deep Mine. At times, I feel there are more trucks on the road than cars. I have encountered intimidation and entitlement by these risky truck drivers. They travel in convoys at high rates of speed. I did follow one at 70 miles per hour in a 45 zone. I have recently counted in the span of 30 minutes 25 trucks passing by one point on Route 31 mid-morning in the village of Donigal. Many tourism sites are located in this area. We have World UNESCO Heritage Site of Fallingwater, two state parks, Laurel Hill and largest state park of Ohio Powell, two ski resorts, and several campgrounds, one of which has 840 sites and planning to expand this summer. These roads have many villages and businesses and turnpike interchange. They are two-lane roads that wind their way up and down this mountain community. Accidents and fatalities have occurred with truck involvement. We want visitors to feel safe, and I ask you how these high truck traffic roadways are safe in such a busy tourism area? They are congested with threatening and hazardous drivers, making us all vulnerable on these roadways. A traffic study in these corridors would be most helpful. Let's change our acceptance of these extractive industries, stop the Rustic Ridge mining and its expansion. I'd like us to be enlightened into climate change and to protect our land, our air, and our water. And asking you to be proactive leaders to cherish our community and our people.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I long for the day when we have county-level public meetings that we can be constructive like we are today. I'm Jim Keifer from East Huntington Township, and I was in the early meetings of the Rustic Ridge issues, and it's all come just as we figured it would back then, rich get rich or get poor. And I've been in Yukon too, and that's come true. And, you know, it's just five years down the road, real new world it's going to go. I would like to see the county buy out Yukon, take your blake money, let the Urban Industry Council wiggle some numbers around and just buy those people's homes. And if you want to resell them to people who are aware of what's going in there, then you can get some more money back. On the other subjects, though, on the district attorney crashing the car, I think that all county employees should say that if I'm going to wreck one of our cars, my cars, I'll take a blood test. You're bold enough to put up traffic stops, sobriety tests around the holidays. Everyone driving a county car should take a blood test, and if it's 3 o'clock in the morning, take two blood tests. But if, if they don't want to do that, then maybe they could just make a campaign pledge and say, hey, I'll pledge that if I wreck a car, I'll get a blood test. And so we know how great these campaign pledges are, and if Mr. Chu wants to use a microphone like everyone else here too, he could clear up this issue of his lack of contributions. And maybe, maybe he's not doing that, but if I was Ted Kopus, I would be donating money to his campaign and hoping he doesn't clear that up. But it just shows how public our party politics takes people out of the whole process. It's just, it just gets deeper every year. On the corridor, I'd like to instruct the coroner to look for vaccination damage in some of the deaths. If you're not believing it, you can still look for it and use the people to think that there is a large thing of vaccination deaths. And time is a train, toxic train wreck, this was in Ohio and Pennsylvania. You know, what's going through our local tracks? You know, I live by a track where most people here, we don't know what's here. There's plenty of finger pointing from the national to the local level, and I hope our local guys could come up and just tell us everything's okay. So on the ghosts of the COVID past and the COVID future, I would ask you, do you want the team that led us through this COVID thing with the lockdowns and all the controversial information that came out? We have, you know, the Westmoreland Emergency Department, the hospital, the trip was part of the program, the food, the food programs that you're getting, you're giving people foods, making them sick, and then they're more susceptible to the diseases. So just to finish off, then, what would happen if we have a real killer come through like this African's virus now or a bird flu? And what leadership do we want to do again? Do we want to go with the team that was here before, or do we want to have public meetings and have real dialogue and get through the industry propaganda? And, or do we want to look and pull out of the, out of the community those who were thinking critically, who were cautious and could lead us through the next thing? Because it could be, it could be a virus, it could be a food problem. It could be a food problem. It could be a side of the war. It could be a real war. But who do you want answering that phone at 2:30 or 2 o'clock in the morning? The old guys or the people? Thank you.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Madison Hinkle. I live in Mount Pleasant. I moved to Westmoreland County in August of last year after obtaining my dream job. I bought a house and started exploring my new home and all of the amenities that the area has to offer. My favorite, the outdoor recreation opportunities. I'm originally from West Virginia. And one of the things I loved about Westmoreland County when I decided to move up here was that it reminded me so much of home. I've been lucky enough to hike in several of the county's state parks and spend time relaxing in swimming holes in the state forest. Westmoreland County truly has so much to offer when it comes to outdoor recreation. And I know it's a large source of tourism for the region as well. With great outdoor amenities, however, comes a responsibility to protect them. In the short time that I've lived here, I've experienced more than just fantastic recreation opportunities. I've seen creeks running orange, coal dust staining the roads, and swaths of forests cut down. I've heard stories of water coming out of the tap of funny color, talked to people whose homes are on a slope due to subsidence, and felt my skin burn while standing outside of a hazardous waste facility in Yukon. I know that population growth, especially in my age group, is a challenge that Westmoreland County is working on. But for people like me, young professionals who just moved to the area, the only way you're going to get us to stay is if we feel safe and that we can enjoy the things that make us love the area. I don't want to see orange creeks. I don't want to hear about people needing water buffaloes. And I don't want to fear breathing in the air. This is more than just an environmental issue. This is a quality of life issue. When I lived in West Virginia, I was scared to get in the Mon River. Now, it's my hope that we start pushing back on industry, on operators like Max Environmental and LCT Energy, because I never want to have to fear getting in the Yawk. And we're going to need your support to make sure we're on the right path. It's time to hold polluters accountable. And it's time to start protecting the county's two most valuable assets, its people and its natural resources. They're worth far more than industry, and they're the foundation for the future of the county. And you're going to lose both if changes aren't made. Thank you for your time.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning, Westmoreland County. So many familiar faces here. It's really good to see you all. Thanks for an hour of public comment. It's so important that we have the space to be in touch with you. And it's so important that you all take the time and the bravery and you work through your sweaty palms and your shaky voice to give public comment. I give it like twice, two or three times a week, and I'm still nervous. If that makes any of you feel better. My name is Stacy Magda, and I am here as a resident of Acme, Pennsylvania, and a representative of the Mountain Watershed Association. I've been a resident of the Laurel Highlands for 12 years. And my husband's and mine dream to be here was to raise a family, to have everything in our backyard, and not have to move to Colorado or Idaho or Montana so we could stay close to our aging parents as well. Today, 12 years later in 2023, our community is affected. It's at risk by the deep mining complex that LCT Energy has active and proposed in the area. Our mission at Mountain Watershed is to work to support advocacy, conservation, education, and outreach to protect, preserve, and restore the greater Yacka-Gany River watershed. We work in deep support of our community for quality of life as well as quality environment. And we hear constantly serious concerns when we're breaking down issues from Max Environmental in Yukon and the 527 private water supplies that are at risk in the Donigal area. To put the numbers together, we're talking over 1,000 of your constituents that are at risk and impacted by just these two issues. There are many more that you've heard from over other people today. As you've already heard, the Rustic Ridge Deep Mine has caused very serious irreparable damage to water supplies, homes, people's quality of life. This is all true. This is happening every day. We invite you to come see, come talk to these people. They'll let you in their home. They will. They'll offer you a glass of water and tell you how their water has changed. They'll have you sit on the front porch and understand what has changed since 2018 to now. And it's everything, everything has changed. We commend the courage of the community for the conviction to do what is right and to call on to you to also do the same, to do what is right when it comes to these operations and how they impact our community. Go Laurel Highlands. The stories that we tell of our region are in this beautiful guide. And I see on the front page and on the back page and nearly every page in between. What do you see? You see water, clean water. That's the story that we tell in the Laurel Highlands. The quality of life, good people, amazing places. And we're calling you to help us keep it that way. In 2015, as a threat of Rustic Ridge One loomed, expert review indicated serious concern for subsidence, water loss if this area was mined. And back then, those concerns were theoretical. Today, they're real. We're citing concerns throughout the expansions. And what we want is a plan to prevent it, not a plan or action when disaster happens, not the scramble and the pointing of finger when disaster happens. We want to prevent it. So go call them and just support them to join us in Donigal and Acme in Yukon and help us find this true mass housing and to protect what is so rare to us and probably what everybody loves. And thank you for your time. I thank everybody for your time and sharing that.
Anybody else for public comment?
There being enough of a public comment, we will move on to the agenda for this morning. The first items for approval are the proclamations and years of service that court on page one of the agenda.
Is there a motion for approval of proclamations?
Submove.
A second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can you do a separate mention then for the years of service as well?
I, I submove for the years of service.
A second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
The first item is a necessary report. Item one from adult probation. Consider for approval items A, B, and C as set forth in the agenda.
Is there a motion?
Submove.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
The second items are from behavioral health and developmental services. Consider for approval items A through F as set forth in the agenda.
Is there a motion for item two?
Submove.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
The third items are from the Children's Bureau. Item A, excuse me, consider for approval items A through E as set forth in the agenda.
Is there a motion for item three, Children's Bureau?
Submove.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
The fourth items are from the Controller. Consider for approval items A and B as set forth in the agenda.
Is there a motion for item four in the Director's Office?
Submove.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
The fifth items are from the Court Administration. Consider for approval item A as set forth in the agenda.
Submove.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
The sixth items are from the District Attorney. Consider for approval items A through D as set forth in the agenda.
Submove.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
The seventh items are from U.N. Resources. Consider for approval item A, the personnel actions set forth on page five of the agenda.
Submove.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
The eighth items are from Information Systems. And I consider for approval items A through C as set forth in the agenda.
Submove.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
The ninth items are from juvenile probation. Consider for approval items A and B as set forth in the agenda.
Submove.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
The tenth items are from Park Police. Consider for approval items A and B as set forth in the agenda.
Submove.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
The eleventh item is from planning. Consider for approval items A through C as set forth in the agenda.
Submove.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
The 12th items are from public safety. Consider for approval items A through C as set forth in the agenda.
Submove.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
The 13th items are from Public Works. Consider for approval items A through H as set forth in the agenda.
Submove.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
The 14th items are from the Sheriff. Consider for approval items A and B as set forth in the agenda.
Submove.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
The 15th items are from the Tax Office.